Then, Ann, would you please read the meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Monday, July 25, 2011. Agendas are available on the chair by the entrance to this meeting room. If you're here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now is the time for public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the board on an issue that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action. So please come forward, state your name.
Good afternoon. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I understand that the Boulder Bay project has not paid for the environmental document. The reason I'm mentioning that today is the Brockway EIP is in Placer County, and I'm not sure if that is a condition of their permit or not. And if it is, was there a timeframe assessed for that EIP to be completed? And for some reason, if the project is sold, to make sure that the county does get their fair share of the EIP dollars to complete that project if it was a condition of the permit. Secondly, I have some photographs that I'm going to leave that I'd like to pass around. The photographs you'll be viewing are of the Snow Creek Restoration Project in Tahoe Vista on National Avenue. It is a joint EIP Placer County Public Works project. It's been over a year. I talked to the project manager, Kansas McGann, about three weeks ago, and she said we are short on funding. I was curious why RDA didn't pick up on this project during planning. I did request that to be added. I know it won't be, and I'll have further comments on RDA tomorrow. Let's see, what else on this one? I guess that's all. The photographs speak for themselves. I'd like to better understand or have the county at least post something sometime or another when this project might be complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda?
Hello. My name is Mike Buffon. I'm representing the Lake Tahoe Anti-Biomass Coalition. First of all, I want to thank Jennifer for coming to our meeting on Tuesday. And the headline in the paper on Friday read, "TRPA Proposed KB Site Won't Work." That was great news, and it's a step in the right direction, that's for sure. The thing that concerns me is that our cry is no biomass plant in the Tahoe Basin. And the last line in the memorandum from Joanne Marchetta, the TRPA director, it says, "Give due consideration to the Cabin Creek site and any other appropriate alternative site." I'm just here to say that I don't think anywhere in Tahoe Basin and your guys' district that you have control over would be an appropriate alternative site. So I'm encouraging you, if there is any other sites that you're looking at in the basin, that those would be off of the table, too, because our fight won't be over until we get a documentation that states that. We're happy that the Kings Beach site is being looked at, but as of right now, we realize that it's just a recommendation, that there's been no official document yet. So we're asking the board to think about that, that if there is another appropriate alternative site, that that not be in the basin, because if it is, there will still be a fight for us. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who'd like to address the board on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. We will take up our timed item of the day, and that's a presentation by Supervisor Montgomery to Benjamin Heinecke.
Thank you very much. I'm just so pleased to be able to do this today, but I think possibly more pleased than me is Dave Ferrari, who wanted to make a few comments before I move on to the actual commendation. I did tell Dave that even though he's Italian and fairly voluble, that he's to keep his comments limited. So Dave, come on up if you would.[355.72][355.72](Laughter).
Well, I am Italian, so I don't know what voluble means, nor can I spell it, but I'll try not to be it today. Very quickly, this is a great day, I think, for our community. I think a lot of you guys have a lot of time in Placer County, and in that time, you all know some extraordinary young people and students that have come out of your communities, I'm sure. And we're here to recognize one of those people today. And as I said, the Boys and Girls Club, you know, growing up, my heroes were people like Willie Mays and John Kennedy, John Glenn. But as I've gotten older and especially more involved in the community, my heroes have become my parents and my grandmother and teachers. And then after that, they've become a lot of the students and kids that I know, that I can just see them come through these tremendous hardships, like a young man that he was, when we started the Boys and Girls Club, he was living in his car with his mother, and now he's graduating from high school this year. I mean, that's my, those are my heroes. So today, I'm here to be able to introduce another one of those, and it's Ben Heinecke who's here today. Ben grew up in Kings Beach. He and his younger brother pretty much ran the mini golf in town. You guys have all seen the little mini golf. They worked there from when they were seemingly about four or five years old. And, you know, Mr. Broberg, he wasn't there a whole lot. Ben went to high school in North Tahoe, played football there. He, I think Ben liked playing on a team that didn't win a lot of games, which is why he didn't play on the basketball team that I was coaching, and instead, he played on a football team, so much. He's a great musician in high school. He remains one today. You know, there's urban legends have grown up around Benny, I think, in Kings Beach. And being, I talked to my niece today who went to school with him, and she said, you know, Benny, oh, Ben Heinecke was so smart. She said he read the dictionary all the time. He was always reading the dictionary, and people, well, he's reading, he read the encyclopedias a bunch of times. And I'm not sure if that all really happened, but, you know, he's done really well in his life. And I think we've all known these extraordinary people, but not all of them have gone to the Naval Academy. Not all of them have been number one in their class for four years. Not all of them were studying applied math while doing that. Not all of them have received a Marshall Scholarship, which the year he received one, there were only 40 people in the country that received one. And not all of them are Rhodes, I put a little S on there, Rhodes Scholar. He was, went to both Cambridge and Oxford. I, you know, you see his resume there. I think it's probably in front of you, and I'd read it off, but you already know that I don't know how to pronounce a long word, so. And a lot of them are on there, like morphogenesis, I don't. But anyway, I'd be remiss today to not introduce a couple of I know who are Ben's heroes, and he can introduce them, but I'd really like to as well. I've known them probably, well, I've known them longer than I've learned, known Ben, but that's his parents. And that's Marilyn and Ben Heinecke are here today as along with him. So they're not the only parents that have had a child go to the Naval Academy, but they're probably one of the few that have had two. Both of their sons went. And so I stand before you today saying that this young man is simply one of the smartest people in the world, you can see from his resume. He's working on things that are going to make a positive difference in our lives, and I think in Placer County, I'm hoping. We're working with them on that. But most importantly, he's one of the nicest, most respectful young people you'll ever meet. And his career in the Navy and what he's accomplished is a testimony to the importance of providing opportunities for our children. And I think you guys are in that business as well, and I think here's an example of what happens when people are given opportunity. Without further ado, Ben Heinecke.
Ben, if you want to go forward, I will read not all of this, but some of it. And as Dave sort of intimated in that, there's a whole bunch that Ben has done that isn't even on here. This commendation would have been three pages long if we had gotten everything into it. But I have to say that, you know, I was probably most impressed by the fact that he got both a Marshall and a Rhodes Scholarship.
I actually didn't get a Rhodes Scholarship.
You didn't get a Rhodes Scholarship. Dave lied, but that's okay.
He went to all those schools.
He did go to both Cambridge and Oxford, however, so. And I think what's most important, and the reason that I'm really honoring Ben today, is because he's done all these incredible things, traveled throughout the world, and yet his commitment to his community, to Kings Beach, remains so strong. And his commitment to education and young people and after-school education programs like the Boys and Girls Club. So I will read just a few of these things and then turn it over to Ben for a few comments, if I could. Whereas Benjamin Heinecke grew up in Kings Beach and remains connected to his community with many interests, including supporting the North Tahoe Boys and Girls Club, and whereas Benjamin entered the United States Naval Academy Annapolis, Maryland in the summer of 1998 after graduating from North Tahoe High School, Ben graduated from the United States Naval Academy first in his class of approximately 1,000. Ben attended two of the leading universities in the world, University of Cambridge and the University of Oxford, where he obtained his Masters of Science in Applied and Computational Mathematics. He served as an active-duty commissioned officer in the United States Navy from 2002 to 2010, currently serves as a liaison officer with the U.S. Navy Reserve, had a distinguished career with the U.S. Navy, ran the first successful shakedown cruise of the USS Sampson Guided Missile Destroyer, took that boat ship, I'm never quite sure what to call them, from Bath, Maine, with a number of other people who held him, obviously, from Bath, Maine to its home port in San Diego. Also volunteered to join a forward-deployed ship crew in Bahrain to replace an injured officer, completed a month-long assignment in Kabul, Afghanistan, designed and taught the first mathematical biology course in the fall of 2010 with nine math majors at the United States Naval Academy, served as graduate fellowship advisor and program manager for the U.S. Naval Academy's United Kingdom International Scholarship Program, and basically makes all of us feel like a real underachiever. Ben serves as a stellar example to local youth to pursue their own state of excellence through his perseverance and dedication throughout his academic and professional career. Now, therefore, let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in presenting Benjamin Heinecke with a commendation in honor of his long list of accomplishments and years of service in the United States Navy. And if you noticed, he graduated in 1998, so he's still about 12, having done all these things. So Ben, thank you so much for being such a stellar example to your community and to all of us.[833.03][833.03](Applause).
Thank you to the board. Thanks to Dave for that very generous introduction and for his patience over the years teaching me how to dribble when I first tried out basketball unsuccessfully. Also, thank you to my parents for all their support over the years and for helping me take advantage of all the opportunities that were presented to me as I grew up in North Lake Tahoe. It feels, you know, I feel like, I feel very honored to be getting this award. I feel that part of it is due to the fact that I took advantage of the opportunities that were presented to me. And I really have to thank folks like Dave Ferrari, who is in the business of providing those opportunities to a number of children throughout the North Tahoe area through the Boys and Girls Club. While I was graduating high school and getting ready to go off and sail around the world, he and some colleagues were putting together the Boys and Girls Club. And now, it's, I'm sure, you know, you've heard about it, many of you have seen the building there in Kings Beach, where right next door to where I went to school, is this amazing place where hundreds of children are served every year and are given that extra bit that takes education and turns it into opportunity. I, you know, growing up, I had a lot of opportunities through the high school, the great teachers, the advanced English, calculus, physiology, French that was offered at North Tahoe High School, the sports, the band. I was also given the opportunity to experience the diversity of a public school, which I think has been important in my career in the Navy, having, you know, interacted with people from all walks of life and knowing that I was more fortunate than many out there who kind of didn't get the opportunities that were kind of especially present in a place like North Tahoe. We have, in North Tahoe, we have a lot of great teachers who are willing to take a pay cut so they can live in a beautiful area. And so you get a lot of very dedicated folks that put together programs that provide a lot of opportunities, but I think that's a fairly unique situation. And a lot of teachers throughout the country and the county, I'm sure, have to take a pay cut without kind of any appropriate other incentives. One of the things I've been doing, I've stayed in the Navy Reserve, and I'm working with the Office of Navy Research now, as I go back to school using the GI Bill, another great opportunity, to study bioinformatics at UCSF. And one of the big goals of the Office of Naval Research these days is education, especially in the area of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So that, you know, educating future generations of Americans in those areas is not just something nice to have, something to say that we can compete with Japan and Germany, you know, on these standardized national tests. It's actually a national security issue. The Navy needs people who are able to operate our high-tech machinery. Our high-tech machinery, our advanced engineering, our advanced warfighting ability is based in many instances on this top technology. And while we're still the leading innovator in the world, we can remain on top in terms of defense, but as soon as we begin to lose that, we'll fall behind. And I think it's a scary thing to see that we're starting to fall behind in terms of technology, in terms of our education. And you can see this in the universities, that they have to go overseas and recruit. Luckily, we still have some of the best universities in the world, and we can recruit the best students from overseas, but we need to have, you know, coming up through our system, folks who are able to continue to help us compete. So to that end, you know, the Office of Navy Research, which I work with, supports all kinds of things, like science fairs, et cetera. I'm going to be working with Dave and some other folks on helping Sierra College, which is with a kind of a mechatronics program, and kind of help begin to give back to my community, as many of you have done for years, kind of dedicating yourselves to your community and providing opportunities for folks like me to experience what we have and try and figure out how we can make our difference. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.[1170.75][1170.75](Applause).
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you. It was truly my pleasure.
Dave. Yeah. So now we will move to our department item, which is update presentation Facility Services, but I can't find Jim Durfee. Has anybody seen Mr. Durfee? Oh, my goodness.[1187.03][1187.03](Laughter). What? Is there a story, Jim, or?
You don't need to feel compelled to state for these presentations if you don't want to.
So we're going to receive an update on our comprehensive facility master plan. So I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Durfee with Facility Services, and for those of you that wonder, I used to have longer hair. We're here today to give you an update briefly on our progress on the comprehensive facilities master plan update. Your board will remember that back a couple of months ago, we gave a pretty extensive update on the history and what we had done to date in terms of pulling data together and information. This is just a stop-in along the way. We will be coming back every couple of months to let your board know about progress. We're not asking for any specific action from your board today. However, we're always interested in whether or not we're on the right track, if you have any direction of the ways that you'd like us to be looking at some of the information that we're pulling together. Joel's going to walk you through kind of a current status and the things that we've been working on since we talked to you in March. And you're going to see for the first time a number of maps of the Placer County Government Center, the Duett complex, that have some depictions on them. And I wanted to preface this by saying we're not trying to plan anything today. What we're trying to do is give your board an update and an understanding of what the holding capacity of that property is. So you're going to see a map that's got bubble diagrams on it that shows different opportunities at that site. We're not trying to drive where anything would sit on the site. This is simply an exercise to show you what would fit. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Joel, and you can see that we're going to segue into a multi-directional street here in what looks like a cemetery, and I won't even dive into the symbolism of that.
Thank you, Jim. Chairman Wiegand, members of the board. Again, Joel Swift, Deputy Director of Facility Services. As Jim mentioned, we last had a good discussion back in March of this year and talked about where we were with the 1993 master plan. And just to recap very briefly, we talked a little bit about those completed projects, those achievements, and we're going to hear a little bit more about that during the CFFP presentation that the CEO's office will provide next. And we talked also about the actual square footage and how close that master plan was or wasn't relative to staffing and square footage. The other piece that we've been working on has been the infrastructure mapping and assessment of our infrastructure, again, primarily at the Duett Center. And we'll come back to that later in the presentation. And all of this really sets the groundwork for where we need to start thinking about the next 20 to 25 years and how that helps to provide information to your board. So going beyond that '93 master plan, again, it was essentially an accurate tool for planning capital projects, provided, it was actually a very detailed assessment of all those needs of every department and a multi-year effort that involved every department and assessment of all the spaces. And at this point, staff is not proposing to recreate that effort at this time due to our dynamics of our government, and rather use the data that we came up with over the last 20 years to look at projections and recommendations. Through that, one key data point that we're going to focus on today is this current square footage of buildings, all buildings, to the population in a ratio, and using that as a mechanism to forecast, if you will, worst case or a high-end number of square footage needs. I think we all recognize there's a lot of factors that come into play in that number that really could reduce that ratio, meaning it's likely that our square footage could draw down depending on the ratio of employees to population and the square footage to employee. And technology, I think one of the things we saw in the last 20 years, several departments, admin services, one reduced the amount of square footage that was projected because they used more technology and fewer employees. Also, there are other dynamics, including contracting of services, and whether or not the growth occurs, projected growth occurs in incorporated or annexed areas may change those ratios. So what we're looking at today is that what we'll call worst case or a high-end number. So the other piece of information that has come up since March, in April, SECOG issued draft numbers for population predictions for the entire region, and for Placer County, that was very valuable, at least as one measuring point. They place it as a 2035 number and a holding capacity number. And I think we're going to focus primarily on the 2035 number, but also look, take a look at that holding capacity that at least they projected. And using that, that number, the holding capacity, we're also looking at where we know we're going to have some growth in South Placer, and we also have some projects within the overall plan coming up. So we have known projects in South Placer as well as up here in the Tahoe region, most notably the Tahoe Justice Center and Tahoe Government Center. So using that information that I just mentioned, looking at the current population of the county at, as of 2011, at 339,000, SECOG projects the population at 2035, and certainly this could be, you know, 2025 or 2045, but that as a measuring point, about 482,000 folks, and ultimate holding capacity at 628,000. Current staffing, we looked at two numbers, funded and filled, funded being at 2346 and filled being at 2189. And again, these are straight-line projections that you're looking at here. If things were at the same ratio as today, then we would have some rate, a varying ratio of staffing, which would drive square footage. The other key data point is that existing square footage. And if you looked at that as a square footage per thousand residents, and you did just again, a straight line for 2035, comes up with a number of about 1.6 million square feet and around 2 million of ultimate holding capacity. Again, I should make the point that we are looking at a gross number here, includes our detention, our criminal justice, as well as road barns, warehouse space. So the square footages that we're talking about here are just that overall big picture. So applying that number and that information to the 2035 scenario, looking at that 1.6 million, which is the total low right on of this graph, and what we're looking at is what is that capacity in Auburn at the Government Center? We know we're going to have a certain amount of growth of projects already in the West Placer, South Placer area, which includes the Adult Corrections Facility at the Bill Santucci Justice Center. We also put in known square footage numbers for known developments, as well as, again, the Tahoe facilities, roughly 300,000 square feet. And this is, as you can see, is a very round number. We're not trying to be to the square foot, and you'll see that there's a rationale behind that as well. When you look at that for that holding capacity, again, this is well beyond most of our timeframe. It could double again. And really, at 2 million square feet, if we got to that, then it's possible that we could have 600,000 in Auburn. And I say possible because there's a lot of factors that could drive that to other locations as well. So applying that to the Government Center, this is really a bubble diagram looking at that first scenario, the 2035 scenario. And this is showing the current development, current pattern that we've had in the past 20 years of the master plan, really in roughly 100,000 square-foot chunks. The CDRC, the Finance Admin Building, the Auburn Justice Center are each around that amount. And this diagram shows following a similar pattern, along with other scale of facilities, notably on the west side where the current animal shelter is and south of that area, roughly building out 400,000 square feet of space and demolishing another 100,000 square feet. And that 100,000 square feet is the current location of Health and Human Services, which we've, your board has invested enough work to keep them there about 10 years. So somewhere in the near future, we're going to have to start to address that facility. This diagram also in the yellow shows flex that were identified earlier as flex space is not necessarily identified as the core, and potential commercial development similar to the Home Depot development following that pattern. Again, we're showing a similar pattern. This diagram also in the yellow shows flex that were identified earlier as flex space is not necessarily identified as the core and potential commercial development similar to the Home Depot development following that pattern. Again, we're showing a similar pattern, and it looks like, you know, from a land use perspective and meeting our zoning and our current capacity, there's certainly the capacity to do that. In the long run, it's the same following that pattern through. At a certain point, it becomes a little more dense, maybe a parking garage, maybe a higher level of scale of building in the center, but certainly could fit up for that. And what we're doing here is testing, can the land hold it, if you will? Does your property support that? And I think the answer is yes. Turning back to that earlier point about the infrastructure.
Joel, if I could interject, I wanted to just kind of drive that point a little bit, if I could. This exercise, again, was simply to determine what the holding capacity of the property was. It's not intended to try to drive policy decisions at this point in time, where facilities get constructed, what the type of those facilities are. The timing of those facilities are all policy decisions that the board, this board and future boards will undertake as we either further develop this plan or as need and ability combine to create the opportunity to do new construction. So, just again, a reminder, and I do that, some of us remember going through this exercise 20 some-odd years ago, and when you start to put maps on the table, it gets people very interested in what's going to go where. And we're happy to have that discussion anytime your board wants to have that discussion, but we're not trying to drive that right now.
Thank you, Jim. So, turning back to the other topic, which was utility infrastructure, we have completed the first phase of mapping our infrastructure here. Again, bear in mind, it's coming on 70 years for the work that was built as part of the regional military hospital. And key to that, it turns out, really no surprise, is domestic water is one of our weak points. Again, it was developed prior to the inclusion of fire sprinklers in buildings. And when we did the CDRC, we had to really finagle to have enough capacity to meet the fire flow for that building. So, what we're having, proposing to have our consultant do is take the next look at, which is really looking at the pinch points in our system, first of all being our water system, and looking at the capacity and also condition assessment for that. And what that tends to drive as well is the next discussion, which is our alignments for utilities and alignments for roads. So, on your board's agenda for tomorrow is an item request for the contract for West Jost Civil Engineers to take on the next phase of work for the analysis of our water system. And essentially, this is the diagram that we would propose to give them, showing the potential growth, and that's that worst case. And we're going to see at which points we might meet the weaknesses of our system and come up with a study to see where our system works and where we need to make modifications. So, along that line, the next step really is that engineering report for the water system and continue our assessment of our other utilities. And then, next steps after that, really start looking at that next round of projects that are in the capital facilities finance plan. And that, right now, is showing the animal shelter, a warehouse building at some point, HHS lab office and clinic and other related functions that would test the square footage capacity. Ultimately, future steps would develop an infrastructure plan for the master plan and continue those planning efforts for future projects as they come up. And at some point, when we do have projects that are ready to go forward, and we're not there now, would be to prepare the appropriate environmental documents envisioned as some sort of master EIR for the campus that addresses those infrastructure needs, the alignments, the services, the road alignments, and any potential building sites. And then, tearing off of that would be any project-specific environmental documents. Ultimately, of course, this is all designed to fit into managing and developing the cost model and how infrastructure and specific projects will need to be coordinated with the CFFP.
I think that really concludes our update and presentation formally. Certainly like to open to the board, wanted input from you as to, A, whether you have questions or not, or B, whether there's other things that you want us to consider and look at over the upcoming couple of months before we check back in.
Questions, comments? Jennifer?
Joel, could you go back to the bubble, water bubble picture? That one, the water bubbles. Are we going to have them analyze the needs for the flex square footage as well? Because I don't see those reflected in there.
Those were not considered originally. There's two areas, I'm going to go back to another diagram so we can see that flex location. Looking at the one at the upper right, that, at least initially, was considered that it might have service directly off of Bell Road. But we certainly can have them look at that, and we'll have them include to see what that might tie into it. The other location to the lower left of the diagram, the farthest southwest, is a little more problematic. It's quite remote from our other facilities. The infrastructure that we put out to the children's shelter and the women's shelter really isn't sized necessarily to meet that. Ultimately, that was sort of a holding use. We certainly could look and see what challenges that could add to it.
Yeah, I just think that if we're going to be going forward with an analysis of our water needs, we need to make sure that those two flex pieces are included in that, particularly if we're looking, you know, to do something to expand either the children's receiving home or a women's shelter. Those are fairly water-intensive uses, is my guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
The, pardon me, the utilization of the kind of a flat-line projection based on current population and future absorption of population doesn't really, I think, adequately reflect what we saw over the last 10 years, which was that most of the growth occurred in the incorporated cities as opposed to unincorporated county. And so, I think from maybe the standpoint of CEO's office, we probably need to start looking at, all right, if in the future we see the continued growth in the incorporated cities unless in the unincorporated county, what does that do to our staff projections by that 2035 deadline? I mean, you're showing a straight-line projection, takes us up to 3,300 employees, almost 1,000 over where we are right now. But if that growth happens in the incorporated areas versus unincorporated, do we have staff demands that are growing like that? Regardless of whether the growth takes place in the incorporated or unincorporated area, it's fair to assume that the majority of the growth will continue to be in the southwest portion of the county through greenfield development that we're, as a board, actually making provision for through the PCCP. And so, I'm going to bring us back to the conversation about this ongoing suitability of continuing to build facilities out at DeWitt, which is fairly well removed from the area where we've experienced growth and the area where we are planning for our future urbanized growth. And I think our board needs to, consistent with the way that we are planning for almost a 50-year horizon under the PCCP, I think it would be prudent for our board to, at some point, and perhaps not today, but at some point, have that broader discussion about what is the best location long-term for our county to be providing services, particularly if you're going to see growth happening in the incorporated cities, then the services that we will continue to be responsible for will probably primarily be HHS-related and our various law enforcement functions. And you'll see fewer facility-related services and planning and building. Those will tend to go by the wayside. And clearly, we've already taken steps with our, the facility we're building down off of 65 right now. We've taken some steps on the law enforcement side. And maybe we need to, as a board, start having that policy discussion about what is the long-term kind of highest and best use for DeWitt? And is it really as the Center for Delivering County Services? So, I, you know, I'm not proposing anything today, but I think if we look at where the growth is going to happen, clearly, we're making provision for that, and it's not, it's not right here.
Mapping on to that, in the last era, when we revisited this thoroughly, there was a fair amount of discussion about sort of our corporate headquarters versus our retail functions, if you will. And that really, my recollection is that the focus of the DeWitt uses would be more the corporate headquarter types of functions, although that delineation not being perfect. And then, we would try to locate in proximity to the population centers where the retail business, if you will, occurred. And so, is that been factored into this also?
Well, at this point in time, really, all we, the only exercise we've done in terms of projections was simply, what's the gross holding capacity? We haven't, we haven't at all delved into this issue that you're discussing at this point in time. It will be very important, though, as we move forward, ultimately on updates after today, updates to the capital facilities plan, to start to ferret these things out. The timeline of the delivery of projects becomes crucial when we're planning on the finances as much as anything else. Wasn't important particularly to this exercise we did today. So, we'll continue to work on that and take your comments into consideration as we prepare the next iteration of this, of the capital plan. And in terms of the service delivery, Robert, you're exactly correct. What we had done, what the board settled on back in '93 was a centralized administration executive area with satellite functions spread out into the population centers. That's what we have developed at this point in time. Supervisor Yuler mentioned the Santucci Center was put together with that exactly in mind. We've leased a large building down in the Rockland, the West Rockland area, that has HHS in it now. So, we're doing that along the way. And further discussion of that and refinement or expansion of that program, I think now is the time to be having that discussion. We're in between waves of construction. It'll be a number of years before we deliver any more large facilities like that. So, it's a prudent time to have that discussion.
All of that dynamic, I think, you know, I'm sure it'll be long past the time that I'm on the Board of Supervisors, but having the Board of Supervisors in proximity to the corporate headquarters down in DeWitt, the 15-minute time travels that we or staff constantly make, just the inefficiencies resulting from that, plus I'm sure others, would be a huge, to remedy, that would be a huge improvement to our opportunity to create better efficiencies.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I actually had a question about the SECOG numbers, and it actually only came to me with Kirk's comments. Are those numbers based upon census data or are they based upon actual residents? And the reason I ask is what we've seen in the last 10 years here, and particularly in the Tahoe area, is a decline in permanent population, so about a 21% drop in permanent residents. But we actually have just as many needs because we have so many second homes. We've had a ton of building up here. So, does the ultimate build-out that includes potentially a government center up here in the basin analyze not just residents, but the overall needs driven by second homeowners?
It's not quite as detailed as that. For this exercise that we did today, the SECOG numbers are actually, it was actually a housing unit number that we extrapolated population out of. Of course, they extrapolated a housing number out of a population number, but they didn't publish it that way. So, at this point in time, it's not that refined. As we, as we go towards specific planning for specific facilities, we take a much harder look at that. Again, though, that all bases ultimately back towards employment trends and service delivery. The size of the building really follows the service delivery models. One of the reasons we're not doing, and Joel talked about it a little bit, one of the reasons we're not doing an extensive, or not recommending that we do, an extensive analysis of department-by-department, by division-by-division employment projections is because the county is in a state of evolution right now, as is all government, and it's impossible, I think, for anybody to predict what we're going to look like as an employer, as agency, as departments, over the long term while we're in the middle of this evolution. So, it seemed like it at not an appropriate time for us to put the resources into that type of analysis. That can follow down the road as we start to program more facilities. That becomes pretty important. Again, at this point in time, we're doing kind of an interim update on this master plan right now, and I would envision seven to 10 years from now, having to reduce some of this in more detail as we have, by that point in time, the county should have evolved into whatever it's going to look like down the road. So, it's a little bit of a crossroads right now in terms of our ability to make predictions as to how many employees that we have. And the number of employees is really the driver behind the size of the buildings we need.
Agreed. And I just want to echo Kirk's comments because I think we do need a discussion at some point, obviously not today, about, you know, is DeWitt the place? If it's not DeWitt, what is the place and what drives those numbers? Because what drives the numbers in the unincorporated eastern end of the county is probably a little bit different than would drive those, or quite a lot different than what would drive those numbers in the west or the south end of the county. So, I would love to have that conversation.
That even more is, going back to the even darker corners of my memory, as I recall, we did a calculation as to the population center of South Placer.
We did.
When we revisited this last time, just to, and of course, then you have to project where the expected growth patterns are going to occur so that makes it most convenient. But then, in addition to that, I'm thinking now, too, it'd be great to hear from HHS because I don't remember exactly the number, but I know a majority of the cost of that budget is actually outsourced money, as I recall, 60-something percent. We outsourced something.
It's pretty high.
So, and part of that is trying to embed our services in nonprofits or other deliverers in the non-governmental sector that it's important to have some of those services actually embedded in the communities so that people will access them as compared to even traveling to an adjacent town. So, all of that would be a good, healthy, vibrant conversation, I think, for the board to have. Good comments. Good work. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
So, we'll take up our item four, which is the capital facilities financing plan and the funding for all of this stuff.
Graham Canous, your Finance and Budget Operations Manager. And your board has had many, many discussions about the budget this year. So, we're going to translate it into somewhat different language for you today. Certainly, as evidenced by the prior item, the, whatever our core services look like in the next three years, five years, 10 years, we certainly have facility needs relative to existing and whatever our, you know, future staff is going to look like. And Brian will walk through this PowerPoint related to how we will fund our facility needs over the course of the next 10 years based on your board's stated priorities. And this is sort of a two-year check-in based on the last time that we came before your board, talking about financing of facilities over the course of the next 10 years. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Brian, and he can walk through it.
Good afternoon. Brian Hacker, County Executive Office. As Graham said, we last checked in on the capital facilities plan with your board in 2009. And just since it has been a bit, just a little background of what this plan is, it is essentially a framework that provides for the delivery and the prioritized funding of capital projects over the next decade, and guides the county in making appropriate decisions based on priority and available funding. It was first affirmed by your board in 2006 and reviewed again in 2007 and 2009. There are projects throughout the county that are included in this plan, including here in the Tahoe area. A bit of perspective before we go into the updated plan is, over the past decade, $231 million in completed projects were funded. And as I touch on some in the next few slides, in your board packet is an attachment, I think it's the very last attachment, that shows a fuller list of completed projects and their funding mixes. But going past, to the past decade, the Tahoe Area Regional Transit Facility completed in 1999, the Finance Admin Building completed in 2000, the Juvenile Detention Center completed in 2001, the Main Jail Housing Unit Four completed in 2003, a variety of projects on that Main Jail campus on DeWitt completed from 2000 through 2005, the Fullwiler Admin Building renovation completed in 2005, the Community Development Resource Center completed in 2005, the DPW relocation to just up the road from us at Cabin Creek, the Auburn Justice Center completed in 2007. 2008 is worth pausing on for a second just to see that that was a year where $100 million in completed projects were finished. And that's thanks to both the foresight of your board and also the hard work and the very good work of our capital facilities folks. 2010, more recently in our memories, the Colvax Library renovation on the DeWitt Campus, Health and Human Services, Human Services Space Improvements and Buildings 113 through 115. And up the road from us, the building that goes by first-name basis, the Tahoe Engineering Just more recently, the Tahoe Land Development Office Just more recently, the Tahoe Land Development Office acquisition up here for $3.7 million. That was the acquisition, and the completion of the Rockland Library tenant improvements. So those, that's a quick glance at a lot of projects, a lot of funding, a lot of work by your Facility Services folks over the past decade. Now coming into today's update, in the next decade, a similar amount, $238 million in programs and projects are programmed into the next decade. The programmed projects are programmed according to tiers one through five. Tier one are projects that have already received significant funding commitment from your board. They may be well underway in their construction or other process. So tier one includes, as you're very well aware, the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility scheduled for completion in 2012, the Tahoe Justice Center site selection. That's the money that's still programmed for Tahoe Justice Center that's left over from the Burton Creek Project funding, the Forest Hill Library site acquisition that your board recently took an action on. At this point, the West Placer and Auburn Animal Shelters are displayed as your board saw them in 2009, and the Tahoe Land Development Office improvements, the tenant improvements to the acquisition. Going into tier two, tier two projects are projects that have received policy direction from your board, but the bulk of the funding may yet to be committed. They include the Tahoe Justice Center and the Tahoe Government Center. Tier three projects represent the next round of projects that are online to be completed after tier one and tier two. They include the Forest Hill Library, our County Warehouse and Archives, the renovation of the Auburn Jail, a Health and Human Services Clinic and Lab on the Duett Campus. And tier four projects really is one project, the miscellaneous facilities projects, and this represents contingency funding for the capital plan, any capital needs, contingency funding and funding for any new opportunities that may arise. Tier five projects are those for which construction and funding are scheduled after the 10-year horizon of this plan, after fiscal year 2021. They include the South Placer Adult Detention Center Phase Two with two pods at 250 beds per pod, the Health and Human Services Building, the South Placer District Attorney Probation Office, the South Placer Sheriff Substation, and the Administration Center. So after a look at the projects, talking about the plan itself, the framework itself, a reminder that funding capital construction is very dynamic, that costs can change very rapidly. There are cost variables, including the list in front of you, environmental, market conditions, labor costs, construction and material costs, water and air quality compliance costs, and opportunities for energy efficiencies. The capital facilities financing plan framework contains funding for critical projects. It prioritizes project timelines with available funding. It prioritizes the use of capital facility impact fees, and this updated plan before your board today does not assume additional debt in the 10-year horizon. General fund reserves for capital projects will decrease in this plan by 60% over the course of the 10 years. The capital facility impact fee balance increases, however, that's based on a conservative approach to what we're seeing development doing, and therefore a conservative approach to their use. And obviously, capital facilities impact fees are something that we keep a very close watch on. Talking about, more about the funding sources, in the past decade, you see the diverse funding mix. It's interesting to see here in this $231 million total, the general fund and the debt issuance combined to be about 56% of the plan. When you look on the next slide, you'll see the funding mix over the next decade. The general fund with no debt issuance is 58%. So it's still a pretty comparable use of general fund funding either way. Impact fees are at 28% over the next decade, securitization of tobacco revenues at 8%, and grants and other uses are 6%. So when we bring the capital facilities financing plan to your board, any significant changes in approach are brought back to your board for further action on the 10-year framework itself. And one important note about this capital facilities plans, there are a lot of projects and there are a lot of numbers in this 10-year horizon. However, individual projects are approved individually by your board at the points when funding is required or a direction is required, those individual projects are brought back to your board. So that completes a fairly quick overview of a large amount of information, if you have any questions.
Questions, comments? Check.
I have one question.
And if you could go back to the previous slide, and this is just a clarification of significant changes. Does that mean a project is eliminated, or the project's scope has changed? How would you define a significant change?
Yes, exactly that. Significant changes in a project path, significant changes in a funding source that we had assumed, for example, either one of those would be brought back to your board, could be reason to bring back the entire plan back to your board.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that.
And just to add on to that, annually, when you approve the county budget, you will approve dollar amounts specific to projects in the receiving contributions that year. So there is an annual budget allocation process, too.
And the intent would be to have updates periodically to your board so that we can check in on what the rolling 10-year financing requirements are for the prioritized projects that are prioritized by your board, much like to, you know, this, what we're talking about today is an update from what was presented to the board two years ago under that 10-year timeframe. So we've just now pushed it out two years to capture the change in, well, to capture the projects that have been completed and what's on the horizon for the next 10 years.
Any other questions? Jennifer?
Yeah. Brian, can you go back to the Funding Sources 2011-2021 Projects slide?
Yep.
We showed $19 million in securitization there. What do we have in mind for that?
That is over the next two years. In tier two, the Tahoe Justice Center, the year 13, 14 cost a total 11 million is programmed at this point. Nine million of that would be from securitization.
And what that securitization relates to is the tobacco securitization dollars, which your board has historically set aside for facility projects as a fund source.
Thank you. That was what I was getting at.
Yeah, there's a, and the way that those tobacco securitization dollars work, there's about a five-year cycle related to securitizing those dollars. This assumes that five-year cycle in terms of the dollars that would be available and utilizes that as a financing tool for the projects.
And then on this same slide, the debt issuance at 0%. I know that this board in the past has been willing to look at debt issuance as long it was not going to be used to finance ongoing operations. Is there some reason we're taking a different tack for the next 10 years?
So the approach related to this 10-year plan is intended both to speak to some of the discussion that occurred earlier this year with the board relative to the financing option that was linked to the South Placer Jail in terms of that is a potential option. It was intended to ensure that the general fund slash debt issuance component remain the same. Certainly issuing debt remains an option and could get folded into this plan. And the, as discussed, and I believe it was the April meeting related to the, the April 5th meeting related to the South Placer financing, the, there were two different scenarios presented at that time. So in terms of implications related to folding in some levels of debt, there was a $24 million scenario and a $48 million scenario relative to debt issuance, and the annual cost related to those over the course of a 20-year period would be between $2 and $4 million. The, so that, this can go in both directions. On the positive side, it would provide a cash infusion related to perhaps speeding up some projects over the course of the 10-year period, or perhaps even adding an additional project into that 10-year horizon. On the other side, what the board would need to weigh is sort of speeding up the timeline relative to the project in the 10-year horizon with the costs associated with that from a financing perspective. The, and there would be a 10-year financing plan with, on the debt issuance side, a 20-year payback. So you have that $2 to $4 million annual commitment relative to repaying the debt over the course of a 20-year period. So you get a little more bang for your buck over the course of the next 10 years with a commitment of the $2 to $4 million range on the general fund once you get outside of that window. So we'd see some, as we came back to the board with periodic updates relative to this and the one-year, two-year horizon, you'd see some continuance of that debt issuance impact.
Yep. And my concern really gets back to this general fund number. Even though individual projects are approved by the board as funding is required, I'm concerned about relying so heavily on general fund monies when there are so many other things we operate through the general fund. And so just, you know, I would just say, let's, you know, let's be mindful of making sure we don't take any of the options off the table moving forward over the next 10 years and prioritizing these projects. Thank you.
Certainly.
I understand. Just a little bit on the general fund component, and I think what was, there is a exhibit in your staff reports that has a long-term financing plan. It shows how all those dollars are spread, and what it shows roughly annually to deliver those kind of ranging projects in the dollar amounts is between $3.5 and $4.5 million a year out of the general fund towards capital improvements. And in fact, current year is 3.5. Is that how much is in the current year's budget toward that? So we're still on track with that. In prior years, has there been a high of almost $15 million that went to capital improvements?
I believe the high was $18 million.
As high as 18. So this does reflect a significant downward. But there is absolutely correct that if you're to finance, you could early deliver projects. It costs you a little bit more because of the interest cost. There is a present, net present value of dollars to be calculated in that, however. But also, that general fund contribution would have to pay the debt service. And so you'd be turning that to as a given if you finance it, you'd be obligated to pay that on an annual basis as opposed to have the discretion of postponing doing a project and using that money for other purpose. So that is a kind of a, some game when you look at, if you use general fund monies for financing, you will have to spend whatever that is on an annual basis to pay that debt as opposed to save up the cash and pay it. But those are all within your board's purviews.
Connected to that, the, in the last 10 years, we funded, well, the projection for the next 10 years shows funding for slightly more than what we funded in facility improvements over the last 10 years. And the proposal or the projection or the concept that was presented is to do that with no debt, obviously noting the conversation we just had. Is the ability to do that because of full 10 years of the full facilities fee in light of the slower economy? Is that what makes up the difference to have essentially the same amount of monies in the last decade compared to the next decade, which I would assume we forecast as being much more conservative in terms of revenue generation? But we did not have a full bucket of facilities fees coming in. Is that what makes up the difference of the ability to provide funding for about the same amount of new construction?
Yeah. And it is worthy to note that in your plan, in the tier one projects, the South Placer Jail, of that $105 million, $50 million of that is funded by impact fees, is prioritized by your board. Impact fees already committed.
Plus, you begin with a cash balance of about $35 million. So you have money that's left over from call-to-good years. Part of it's general fund contributions, part of it's impact fees from that time. So you're not starting from zero where you were, say, 10 years ago. You're starting from $35 million. So if you compare year to year, I think it's actually less monies available this decade as opposed to the last decade because you end up with the cash that you're starting with as opposed to, you had none in those prior decade.
There's also, if I might, there's another point that's worth mentioning. In the look-forward numbers that we have here, that South Placer Jail's included in that, and that money's almost all spent already. So out of the $237 million, almost 105 of that is accounted for in that project. So the real look-forward number is some $105 million less than the $237. So that's another way to look at it in terms of that, you know, if you've got $137.4 million in general fund need in this 10-year plan, $55 million of that is already accounted for in the jail project, it's already in the bank, ready to, frankly, most of it's spent already. Most of it's already been spent. It's just, it's in the look-forward because that project's not done yet. So that helps kind of put that number back into perspective, I think.
Other questions or comments, board members? Good. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Would you mind getting me this slide for the prior 10 years?
This slide?
Okay, thanks. That's good.
Yeah, and also in your packet on the last page is a full listing of the last 10 years as well.
Super. Thank you. Thanks. With that, then, we'll talk about public safety realignment. Becky or Holly? Did you want to say something?
Yes, Holly Heinzen, County Executive Office. There is an action associated with that item, and I just would request that we take an action on that particular item. Thank you.
Thanks. Becky, public safety realignment. I'm sorry?
Yeah. Yeah. I would move that the board...
Reaffirm our previous direction to staff in terms of capital facility finance plan.
Second. Moving to the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Becky? Thank you, Kirk.
(inaudible)
Good afternoon, Chairman Weigant, members of the board. Becky Riggan from the County Executive Office to provide an update on the governor's enacted public safety realignment plan. I'm joined today by Mark Giacomin, CEO, analyst for the Public Safety Departments, and in the audience by Presiding Judge Alan Paneshi, District Attorney Scott Owens, Chief Probation Officer Marshall Hopper, and Undersheriff Devin Bell, who are here to assist in answering any questions that your board may have. Today's presentation will review the key provisions and funding mechanisms for criminal justice realignment, known as AB 109, some of the challenges and opportunities contained in this legislation, and we will conclude by outlining the process that the Placer County Justice officials will be using to develop an implementation plan that will be presented to your board in early 2012 for this historic shift in criminal justice policy. In March of this year, we provided an assessment of the governor's initial realignment proposal, and since that time, the state administration has been engaged in discussions with public safety stakeholders, including the Administrative Office of the Courts, the State Associations of the Sheriffs, District Attorneys, and Chief Probation Officers, and with CSAC, the California State Association of Counties. They have also conducted three legislative hearings and numerous subcommittee hearings on the proposal. And collectively, these discussions led to many technical and substantive changes to the governor's original proposal. However, the central theme of realigning responsibility for lower-level offenders to counties was enacted. And while realignment legislation is certainly a budget balancing measure, it is based on the fundamental assumption that counties are better positioned than the state to develop more effective and efficient approaches to working with offender populations who routinely cycle in and out of our jails and state prisons and who return to live in our communities. Central to the governor's realignment plan is the requirement that counties incorporate the lessons learned over the past 20 years regarding what works in managing offender behavior, known as evidence-based practices. This approach to working with correctional populations is not new, and as we discussed in March, has been implemented... in March, has been implemented in over half of the states in the nation over the past decade. The California Legislative Analyst Office and many others, including the Department of Justice and the National Institute of Corrections, have been extolling the benefits of these approaches for many years. However, it took the impetus of a sustained economic crisis and a $20 billion shortfall for several years running for a governor to be successful enacting these concepts here in California. In addition, it appears that public sentiment is also beginning to shift as residents confront the high cost of tough sentencing laws passed in recent decades. A recent LA Times article reported on the public policy, on a public policy poll conducted in California this past July by two firms from Washington DC, one Democratic, one Republican, that had some interesting findings. They found that California voters are more open to several proposals that would shift lower-level, non-violent offenders to local control than they are to raising taxes or further cutting vital services like education or health care to pay for keeping people incarcerated. Specific findings from those studies found that 60% of the 1,500 respondents that were surveyed supported reducing life sentences for third-strike offenders convicted of property crimes, such as burglary, auto theft, and shoplifting. 70% supported early release of some low-level offenders whose crimes did not involve violence, and 80% said they approved of keeping low-level, non-violent offenders in county custody, including jails, home detention, or parole, instead of sending them to state prisons. Finally, Governor Brown's plan for counties assuming responsibility for tens of thousands of offenders over the next couple of years received overwhelming support from votes of both parties, with 81% of Democrats and 74% of Republicans approving this concept. So let's get into some of the specifics of the governor's realignment plan. Under the governor's enacted realignment plan, counties will assume responsibility for $5.6 billion in program costs in fiscal year 2011-12, which is projected to increase to $6.8 billion at full implementation in fiscal year 2014-15. Funding for realigned responsibilities will be provided through the transfer of $5.1 billion in state sales tax and $453 million in reconfigured vehicle licensing fee revenues. And although the legislature did not provide the constitutional protections for future funding that counties were seeking, the governor has expressed his commitment to achieving those protections for counties at a later date. And as I mentioned, realignment legislation is certainly a budget-balancing measure. However, it is also the central component of the state's plan to meet requirements set out in the recent U.S. Supreme Court decision regarding overcrowding in the state prison system. On May 23rd, 2011, the Supreme Court affirmed the lower court's 2009 finding that medical and mental health care for inmates has fallen below a constitutional level of care, and that the only way to meet these requirements is to reduce prison populations. Accordingly, the state must reduce the total population in California's 33 adult prisons to 137 and a half percent of its total design capacity, a reduction of over 30,000 inmates within two years by May 24th, 2013. The California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation reports that curtailing the influx of new offenders and parole violators through implementation of AB 109 will reduce prison populations efficiently, so that early release of prison inmates should not be needed in order to meet this requirement. AB 109 was signed into law in April 2011 and contains the major framework for realigning criminal justice programs from the state to the counties. As I said, they will be resuming responsibility for $5.6 billion initially, and this amount is expected to increase to $6.8 billion at full implementation. This VLF realigned funding is also continued, or expected to continue to fund a number of local public safety intervention programs that were previously funded through the temporary rate that expired in June 30th, 2011. And that included state-funded jail booking fees, rural counties' frontline law enforcement funding, citizens' option for public safety, supplemental law enforcement services, Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act programs in juvenile camp. So under the realignment plan, the state will continue to manage offenders who commit serious violent or sex-based crimes. Counties will, on a prospective basis, assume sentencing responsibility for three groups of lower-level offenders. Those lower-level offenders who prior to AB 109 would have been sent to prison, offenders who have completed their prison sentence and will now be on post-release community supervision, and offenders who are on current, are in community supervision, who fail that and are revoked. It is important to note that no inmates currently in state prison will be released early or sent directly to local jails. All felons currently sentenced to state prison will continue serving their full sentence, and all felons who are convicted of serious violent offenses in the future, including sex offenders and child molesters, can still be sentenced to state prison. Your board packets contain several attachments from the California State Association of Counties outlining the key provisions of AB 109 and of the subsequent revisions contained in AB 117. And collectively, these bills defer implementation from July 1st to October 1st, 2011. They revise the definition of a felony to include specified lower-level crimes that would be punishable in jail or other local sentencing options for more than a year. And due to concerns raised by local public safety officials, approximately 60 additional crimes were excluded from the lower-level definition. This legislation also makes changes to state parole and creates a new level called post-release community supervision for county-level supervision of offenders who have completed their prison sentences and are released to the community. Traditional state parole will continue for more serious violent offenders. And the legislation also enhances local custody and supervision options to include alternatives to custody, including use of home detention. It expands the role and purpose of the previously established collaborative planning body, known as the Community Corrections Partnership, to develop and recommend to the Board of Supervisors a local realignment implementation plan. And it creates an executive committee from the CCP to include the chief probation officers, the chair, presiding judge, a chief of police, sheriff, district attorney, public defender, and the director of Health and Human Services, to review and recommend the final plan to your board. The legislation also added new funding for district attorneys and public defenders to cover new costs associated with local revocation hearings, and it provided one-time funding for startup costs and to support CCP planning processes. It also deferred the implementation of Department of Juvenile Justice policy shifts that were previously under consideration. The Department of Finance and California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation worked together to project the offender population impact resulting from implementation of AB 109 at full rollout in year four. The impact is expressed as an average daily population, which reflects one inmate in one bed for one year, rather than reflecting the actual number of individuals who move in and out of the justice system over the course of a year. This number would be significantly higher. Projected ADP is an important calculation for counties as the state realignment allocation formula reflects. Our funding is based on 60% of our ADP. 30% is based on our county population of individuals between ages 18 and 64, and 10% is based on community supervision success rates that we are experiencing under SB 678. This legislation was brought in an incentive-based approach to support more successful probation supervision through the use of evidence-based practices. It establishes a system of performance-based funding for county probation departments and allows these savings to be shared with the counties in proportion to their success in reducing probation failures. The Department of Finance projects an increased average daily population at full implementation of 429 for Placer County. And this is broken down as follows. 251 low-level offenders who prior to AB 109 would have received state prison sentences. 153 would be on post-release community supervision, and 25 are anticipated to be on state-run parole and would be processed locally for return to custody. And to set a frame of reference for this figure of 429, Placer County currently has a total offender population under supervision of approximately 5,200 individuals. An increase in ADP of 429 would be an 8.3% over Placer County's current total offender ADP. AB 118 legislation creates and funds a community corrections grant program to fund realignment. And it further clarifies that allocation formulas apply only to the first year of realignment, and that funding methodologies for fiscal year 2012, 13, and beyond are subject to revision. Placer County's 2011-12 allocations are as follows. We receive, or will receive, $2,986,000 for incarceration and alternative sanctioning programs. This is part, part-year funding, and will expand to $3.9 million at full-year funding, assuming all other assumptions stay the same. District Attorney and Public Defender parole revocation costs will receive $107,000, split equally between those two offices. And we will receive a total of $350,000 in one-time funding. $210,000 will be for evidence-based practices training, and $150,000 for startup costs and community corrections partnership planning. So our total year-one funding allocation to Placer County is $3.5 million. Realigned funding comes with the requirement to develop a justice reinvestment strategy that fits the priorities and approaches of each county, and that manages criminal justice populations more effectively. Each county must establish a community corrections partnership and an executive committee, and as I mentioned before, both chaired by the chief probation officer, to develop and recommend an implementation plan that will come to your board for approval and funding. The first meeting of Placer County CCP was convened on July 21st, 2011 by Chief Probation Marshall Hopper. It is important to note that neither the projected county ADP nor the county funding allocations under the governor's realignment plan are reflective of the state's existing ADP or of its current costs. In addition, the actual numbers of offenders that will be realigned to Placer County to manage will be higher than the average daily population. CDCR estimates that the actual numbers of new offenders under our supervision will be approximately 350 per year. And the file review that was conducted by our sheriff's department and district attorney for our presentation in March suggests that the number could be higher and could be up to 420 individuals per year. There will also be a compounding effect due to the fact that many of these individuals will be in our system for up to several years. And some of them will unfortunately make choices that virtually guarantee that they will come back to spend even more time with us. Every county will have differing impacts depending on how local authorities make their decisions. And I think all stakeholders in this process can agree that there's simply not enough funding in the enacted legislation for local jurisdictions to continue to incarcerate and sanction these realigned offenders under the same construct of CDCR. And even if counties were to receive the same level of funding as the state prison and parole system in recent years, the outcomes achieved with those dollars certainly suggest that a change in approach is warranted. 70% of offenders on state-run parole return to prison within two years, which is twice the national average. 47,000 low-level offenders served 90 days or less in state prison last year, and half of our released state prisoners who returned to live in our communities never served, never received any sort of vocational training or received any exposure to rehabilitation programs for their drug or alcohol dependencies. And a central assumption in the governor's realign, um, realignment funding plan is that local governments will handle their realigned offender populations in a different manner, and that they will use a hybrid model that includes an optimal mix of incarceration, community supervision and treatment, and other alternative custody and diversion programs during the offender sentence. And also central to the governor's realignment plan is the requirement to incorporate evidence-based practices, the data-driven research findings in sentencing and corrections that control costs, hold offenders accountable, and that protect the public safety, and that have been scientifically studied and found to provide the best chance of reducing risk to reoffend, and thereby reducing recidivism. The system changes envisioned in AB 109, including the development of a local process that allows for the research-based approach to take root, will be significant. And the comfort level of our justice system and our community to accept the central realignment concept of reduced length of incarceration with increased programming and community supervision structure, which according to the research will reduce recidivism is yet to be determined. The impacts of this legislation will certainly reach beyond the jail, probation in the courts, and will impact frontline law enforcement and investigations. Devin may wish to speak to some of those dynamics in a moment. However, Placer County is well-positioned to handle offenders differently and to put them, and to put in place a process that assures the best chance of positive outcome for these offenders and for the public safety of its constituents. Many California counties are fairly new to these concepts and will be challenged in taking on some of these new responsibilities within systems that are already overcrowded and ineffectively managed. However, many other counties have not waited for the state to move in this direction and have been successfully deploying some of these concepts and now have proven track records. Unfortunately, Placer County is among them. Through the leadership of our public safety and criminal justice partners, Placer County has implemented science-based practices in its juvenile justice system, with its repeat DUI offenders, and imagining, and, and in managing its adult corrections population. The CCP will be tasked with developing a more robust continuum of sanctions, including custodial and non-custodial responses, to achieve the legislative intent of improved public safety returns in its criminal justice system. Commonly utilized options include expanded use of risk and needs assessments, intensive supervision, flash incarceration, cognitive skills training, community reporting centers, GPS and electronic monitoring, substance abuse, mental health treatment, aftercare, and housing assistance. The planning process will be developing these practices across a full continuum, as prescribed by AB 109 legislation, will rely on the same past collaborations, partnerships, and strategic planning approaches that were successful in the past. So accordingly, Placer County's roadmap for implementing this new legislation is as follows. As I mentioned, July 21st, the initial community corrections partnership was convened. In August, we will conduct an evidence-based practices seminar with some of the, with the Placer County Superior Court and other justice partners to review the science behind evidence-based practices and how to replicate those proven approaches. In September, we plan to conduct a placement simulation study with justice officials to determine the specific system needs of Placer County. In October through November, the CCP and the executive committee will finalize Placer County's implementation plan, and along with funding recommendations on how best to utilize the $3.5 million of realignment funding. In January, the final AB implementation plan will be presented by the executive committee to the, to your board for consideration and approval. And we plan to return to your board at regular intervals with progress reports and outcome measures as we implement this new legislation. And unless you have any questions for me, we can turn the podium over to some of our justice officials for some of their comments.
Questions, Becky? Jennifer?
Becky, I had one question. You mentioned that this will be an increase of about 8.3% of folks we're dealing with on a daily basis, whether in prison or on parole. What percentage is the 3. million as relates to our overall budget?
Well, I did not run that number, so I don't have it on the tip of my head. I don't know if we can take a shot at it.
I, I, we don't need to know it today, but I'd, I'd be interested to know if there's any correlation at all between the increased number of prisoners and the increased dollars we're getting to handle those folks. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things that I wanted to point out, Becky, and you probably haven't had a time to crunch the numbers, and because this is in such a, I guess, at, at the macro level right now, there, there's going to be a gap between the 3.5 that we're getting vis-à-vis what the actual cost is going to be, right? So I think it's going to be very important to, for us to know as a board what that gap is. The second thing, there's going to be challenges down the road in implementing the plan with our existing facilities, and some other facilities that we may have coming online in the future. So if, if we have to, you know, we, we have to have some of that information in order to make some policy decisions with regards to, you know, activating, possibly activating the, the jail, and, and what those challenges are going to be, because once we do that, there's going to be additional operational expenses that are, that, that may, make that gap arc tremendously higher than, than what the normal gap would be. So that's just on the finance piece. I, I wanted to just talk generally about what I wanted to just talk generally about what I saw at the CCP meeting, and my feeling is, is that, first of all, you know, we have a really rich history of public safety here in the county, and the folks that were in the room, you know, law enforcement, sheriff, DA, probation, Health and Human Services, I think we've got the right people at the table. I think they're going to do a really great job of implementing, they've done a great, fantastic job so far of keeping the public in the focus. And I think that's the real most important thing here, is that, you know, it's really, I find it real interesting that they provide an incentive, you know, 10% or whatever of their budgeted funds. But if you don't meet the incentive, that, it's not just dollars that you lose. That could result in someone's life, you know, because then that in and of itself could create its own perpetual situation. But I know that we're above, I know we have the tools and we have the skill set in order to implement this appropriately. And I think one of the overriding concerns that I heard in the meeting was that we need to be very conscious that when we're creating the policy and implementing it at the ground level on the offender, that it's got to be something that is tantamount to a tight-fitting designer suit. You know, you just can't get something off the rack and make it work. You really, so that's really where the art, if you will, is going to come into this, is to having the experts from the DA's office in probation and the sheriff's office, along with Health and Human Services, to create this big, broader plan that's going to be, result in an individual program, pretty much, for all of these folks that are coming out there. So again, the first meeting I went to was really excited to hear the different ideas and the concerns, but the overall emphasis on the public safety component and knowing that we need to get this right, because, you know, our public is at stake here, so.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I just want to tag on a little bit what the supervisor has mentioned here and on Becky's presentation, is that state's going to give us a little bit of money. It's not going to be enough to cover the issue. We know that. We have all the good departments in place with good history about doing the best job possible. There will be a population that would otherwise go to state prison that'll start becoming our population here post-October, and it could be as many as 30 people a month. We have limited capacity in our existing jail to meet that. I think we have 40 or 50 beds that are there. We'll have the alternative programs, but it's going to take huge due diligence on everybody's part to try and create meaningful programs to still keep our public safe while keeping the costs down. But I think it's going to be a huge challenge. We are looking at, on August 9th, coming back to your board for what will happen as a result of the state budget from last April. Well, now we know that this is part of the state budget. We also know that if the state budget falls to where the income isn't sufficient based upon their revenue projections, which already for the month of June, it is not sufficient according to their revenue projections, and then it triggers a series of cuts starting in December. One of those is about $1 million, two to probation on the negative that we were looking at probably on August 9th. Start looking at what is, what do we need to do to preserve capability financially to deal with that budget reduction, then also if, as we know or predict, that realignment's going to cost more than what the state is going to be paying, how do we contend with that kind of changing environment? So that'll be part of your dialogue on August 9th in response to the catastrophic issues that may be facing us with the state budget, because it wasn't the huge unknown that it was back last spring with an all-cuts budget, but there is a triggering of reduction to counties, mostly in the probation area. Education, higher education gets hit more deeply, but then also we have this, how are we going to pay for, fund that the state's giving us 20 cents on the dollar for what their costs were, and still having meaningful and public safety outcomes. So I just want to let you board know, and we'll try and address that on the 9th of August as well.
Can I mention a few?
Can figure out how to turn the mic on here. Just a few quick things related to realignment that might be helpful context as well. One, this is a permanent change in responsibility. The funding, there could be some potential question related to the funding. The School Boards Association right now is weighing whether or not they're going to contest the funds being essentially carved out of the state general fund. You put $5 billion, the financing structure of this basically took $5 billion that used to go into the state's general fund and took it off the table. $2 billion of that would have gone to support K-12 education, and although the teachers on the California Teachers Association side were part of the overall deal related to this, the school districts themselves, the School Boards Association were not, and they're considering whether or not they want to bring legal action, which could have some impact on the $5 billion fund source. So I'm not sure whether or not they have a, they would have a strong case to the extent that they do that. It's just yet another big looming thing that's out there related to the realignment. And then lastly, I would say that the, there's been some discussion at the, there's a statewide conversation that's happening now related to growth funding that's going to come out of this fund source. We're at a relative low point overall in the economy. Sales tax and vehicle license fees, which fund this, will grow over time. The question is whether the governor's, his staff's estimate of what that growth is going to look like is accurate. And to give you some sense of what that means and how it may relate back to these unfunded costs we may have, there's $1 billion in growth that's projected in the third year of this realignment. And that's $1 billion on, above and beyond the dollars that are already, the $6 billion that's there now, and the growth that's assumed after the first year and after the second year. So it's a, there's a huge potential increase in revenue that the state is assuming related to this shift in responsibility, and it's likely that it's, when we get to that third year, we shouldn't be banking, there's just going to be an extra billion dollars where we're going to distribute to cover our unfunded costs, because it's probably not going to be $1 billion, it'll be a much lower number. I just want to put that piece of it out there, because there's a lot of the concerns that have been brought to the administration have been, there's been, the retort back is, yeah, we understand you might be underfunded here or there, but it's all going to work out in a wash, and you're going to, you guys are going to have more funding than responsibilities, and it's just unlikely to play out. We've not had very many experiences that have played out that way as it relates to the state over the course of the state-county relationship. So just some additional context in terms of how this thing might play out.
Thank you. So I think due to some quick number crunching, we might be able to give you a frame of reference on your question there. So the total public safety budgets are approximately $130 million a year, and $3.35 million would be approximately 3% of that, so 3% compared to 8%, so, and with absolutely the points that the, that there would be a significant amount of change required for us to run our system within this funding.
Thank you.
Okay. And is that, you're finished?
For now.
Pardon? No, I was, I was going to ask if anybody else from the public would like to speak. I noticed that Judge Peneshi came up here, and I don't know if anyone else would like to address the board. Please come forward. I guess not. So we're going to do closed session this afternoon, correct?
Yep.
We will now then adjourn into closed session, and Tony?
The board will take up the items on page two of its agenda. There's two pieces of litigation under item five, number A and B. There is also labor discussion. The board will report out into closed session. I assume we're doing closed session in this room, so the room will have to be cleared. If you can give us a fire and a break.
So we'll take a five-minute break and come back to closed session.
The board has returned from closed session. With regards to the item for labor discussion, there was no discussion, so there was no report. With regards to the first litigation matter, CH Entertainment versus the Mr. Combs et al., the board has authorized the county council's office to defend and represent the interests of the sheriff and his subordinates in that matter. With regards to the second item, County of Plac versus Burrz et al., the board has the following announcement to make. The board is pleased that this long litigation is closed through its final settlement agreement reached between the parties today. In a unanimous vote, this board has upheld its vigorous efforts to defend the public policy. This litigation started with press disclosures in the spring of 2007 that alleged serious public policy issues around the mapping and division of land in Placer County. The county believes this settlement brings closure to this matter while supporting its purpose of pursuing litigation to enforce public policy. This brings this matter to a close. The final settlement document is a matter of public record, and upon request will be provided. And with that, I am finished.